Good evening, everyone. You could take your seat, please. Thank you all for joining us for the Tuesday, June 11 meeting at the Morro Bay City Veterans Memorial Building. Please feel free to take your conversations outside. With that, we're going to start with a moment of silence, and I'd like to recognize two of our community members we lost this last week. Mary Lazir, who was a volunteer in many capacities in this community, as well as William Billy Wells, passed away this weekend. We call him Wild Bill, and anybody who's worked in marine construction on the waterfront over the last 40 or 50 years would all know him. So I'd like to recognize those two members of our community. Thank you very much. And with that, Mr. Vestafelt, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move into reports, closed session. Mr. Newmeyer?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No closed session items to report tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newmeyer. We will move on to mayor and council member reports and announcements. Mine will be short tonight. Attended the Chamber Dinner. Thank you to the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. It was a wonderful evening to recognize many of our local residents in capacities as Citizen of the Air Business of the Year, nonprofit, and living legend. So it was a great night, and we all attended. Had the opportunity to go to the Maritime Museum and see how their new interactive mural works. I hope all of you will make it down there to visit it. It is really, really cool. Coastal Commission is in town for hearings this week. It was a rotation they do throughout the state. They're in Morro Bay, at the end of Morro Bay. The hearings will be the next three days. So anyone who's interested, there are two items on the docket for Morro Bay, the connector, by connector between Morro Bay and Cayucas, as well as the Libertine Project. The, oh, the last thing is I attended senior tribute, which was wonderful to see all the accolades and scholarships and things that were beginning, given out to the youth in our community, and also graduation. I was there for my grandson graduating, but know most all those kids. So it was a wonderful, wonderful celebration for Morro Bay this week. And with that, I will pass it to my right, to Councilmember Barton.
Let's see, I just have two things to report. I went on May 30 to the Vistra place north of us in Moss Landing and was interested to see the updated way that they are doing things there. It had been about two years since I'd been there, so I was glad to, glad to go and see it again. Let's see, and then we just had the Chamber of Commerce Dinner, and that was great fun to see all the folks who were being recognized in that, in that celebration. So that's it.
Councilmember Landrum?
I just have a couple things, too. I, one is I went to, Cal Poly had, one of their classes had, I don't, I don't know what it's called, but they, they went over their project, which was Morro Bay, the city of Morro Bay. And it was really interesting to hear the things that they had come up with. Some of the, the ideas they had was, were a pirate ship ramp at dunes to embark an arrow, pretty creative ideas. They felt like, they did a lot of community outreach, and they felt like the community wants to retain small businesses and the small community feel. They had some ideas about, like, raising the street elevation to the same elevation as the sidewalk, and you would still be able to park, and it would just create more walkability, they thought, like, on the embarked arrow. Yeah, and so that was really interesting. They're going to have, the, the whole thing will be out, the whole portfolio will be available for the city to look through sometime soon. I'm not sure when. You could check with the Planning Commission, they would probably know. And then I wanted to report that I had my town hall, my last, my most recent town hall meeting on Sunday at the Community Center, and it was on, it was on downtown. And I was fortunate to have the mayor there. She came for a bit, and Planning Commissioner Joe Ingraffio was there. And some of the things that came up were, when talking about mixed use, there was, the overall consensus, I would say, was surprised that most people were not in favor of mixed use. One woman who has experience in Pasadena, she has a house there, and she was saying how they tried that there, and it's kind of ruined Pasadena downtown. And let's see, there, there was like, every, I would agree with Cal Poly's assessment that everyone really likes our small, you know, quaint town feeling, and they really wanted to save that. There was mention of bringing the height downtown to even lower than 30 feet. Some people recommended that. One woman thought that it would be a good idea to maximize the rock, the view of the rock at night, and put lighting, like, until 9 o'clock on the rock so that when people were in restaurants and stuff like that, that would be more prominent. So lots of really good ideas. People really were, it's always fun to get together and have these conversations. And so, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep it short. I also attended the gala, the Chamber Gala, and went on the Vistra tour with Councilmember Barton. And then I also attended, I'm a part of the Slow Cal Advisory Committee, and we had our biannual meeting for the Visit Slow Cal. And they went over some, I'll just mention a few things that they went over. They have their roadmap to 2026 goals, which are to enhance organization effectiveness, amplify and steward brand through unified efforts, lead the county tourism industry in fostering a vibrant destination, and demonstrate value. Last year in 2023, the county had approximately 90,000 international visitors, 7.34 million domestic, 2.45 million daytime, and then 4.98 million overnight stay visits in our county. Tourism is 10.66% of our countywide gross domestic product. Without visitors, each Slow Cal household would need to spend an additional $21,415 to create the same economic benefit for the community. And without state and local tax revenue generated by travel and tourism, each Slow Cal household would pay an additional $1,914 in taxes. As of April 2024, there are 202 hotels and motel properties in Slow County with 10,193 rooms available. Morro Bay, we make up 17.3% of the region. Let's see here, a couple more things real quick. Working on a 20-year vision for future of Highway 1. That includes state and federal support. As you know, we have a lot of short-term fixes, but they're looking at the long haul and how we can be more proactive in keeping Highway 1 open. And something I found interesting is that our airport here in San Luis Obispo, 7% more seats than the regional average. It's the best of any regional airport that, we fill the seats there. And in fact, we turn away, it was like 1,000 seats a day, or something like that. And so they're looking to expand the potential of nonstop flights. And they're also working on something that some of you have may have experienced. If you fly out of there, if you don't park your own car or have somebody you know drop you off, it's impossible to find transportation. So that's something else that they're working on. And that concludes my report.
I'm going to keep mine short and sweet. I wanted to give a shout out to Annie and Owen. It's the small things that have big impacts in this community. This is my opinion, anyway. It was such a strange thing. I had been walking around my block with my dog, and I noticed that a couple of fire hydrants had been painted this really vibrant yellow. And I thought, oh, man, I wish I could see mine look the same way. And oddly, no joke, the next day, I'm on my way to a meeting, and I'm about to pull out of my driveway, and there are Annie and Owen painting the fire hydrant on the corner of our street a bright, vibrant yellow. It put a smile on my face, and sometimes those small things have a really big, big impact, and I want to thank them, and thank the Morro Bay Fire Department.
Thank you. And I, I'm just going to tag back on with Councilmember Landrum. I did attend the Cal Poly Design Group also. It was very enlightening, very visionary. And we had a visit this week at the Harbor Department from the new Colonel that's for our division, from the Army Corps Engineers. I'm sure all of you noticed the dredge is gone. They've completed, so. With that, we will move on to city manager reports, announcements, and presentations.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I only have one announcement. It's actually a bittersweet announcement. The first, the sweet part is that the City's News Community Development Director will start on Monday, June 24. And the bitter part of that, the sad part of it is that this is going to be the last city council meeting for one of the city's executive team member, Michael Cauldron, and the interim Community Development Director. So we will really, we appreciate his, his mentorship and his leadership during this, this time, and we'll miss him. And with that, Mayor, you have, I know you have something special planned.
I do. I think we just all wanted to take a real quick minute to thank you and acknowledge the contribution you've made. I appreciate it, we all do. I had an opportunity the other night to attend, attend the Planning Commission meeting, and I know they all spoke very highly of you and with great regard and appreciation for the time you've spent, and hopefully you're still going to be around helping with some of our projects. And any other comments from the council?
Just very grateful that you, you took the position and stepped right in, and really, we didn't skip a beat, and I just really appreciate. Thank you so much.
Well, I'm going to say, having worked with you, I, I really appreciate some of the things that I learned from you. You're very patient, very good educator, and I think wherever you go, they're going to be lucky to have you, no matter what you're doing. Thank you.
I'm going to just say that everything that's been said so far is what I would have said to you. I have, I've just really admired your leadership. So thank you so much for being with us.
Hi. I appreciate, yeah, your calm, your calmness in all of these situations, and your, as, as Councilmember Edwards said, you're, you're just always, you can explain things, I think, in a way that's very easy to process for me. And I appreciate all the work that you did on the short-term rentals and also the Downtown Design District.
Well, thank you, Mayor Wixom, and members of the council. It's a little embarrassing to hear all that, but I appreciate the words. And I appreciate the city of Morro Bay has been a fantastic place to work. It's a short period of time, a little bit over four months, and I hope that I have been able to keep things moving forward. That was my intent as a longtime Los Osos resident and, you know, definitely friend of Morro Bay. I just wanted to help with the transition and help, help the community not backtrack or, or lose any progress on things in motion. And if I was able to accomplish that, then that's fantastic. So thank you very much, and I hope to see you in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you, and, and we appreciate your participation in helping to recruit our new Community Development Director. And with that, we do have a certificate of appreciation for you. With that, we will move into subcommittee reports. Mr. Qualick?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Greg Qualick, Public Works Director and liaison for the Water Reclamation Facility Subcommittee. So the Subcommittee has met recently. As I mentioned, I believe at the last city council meeting, the city did receive a draft appraisal for the old wastewater treatment plant site and surrounding jointly-owned properties that are jointly-owned between the city of Morro Bay and the Cayucas Sanitary District. And this Subcommittee will be meeting with a committee of the Cayucas Sanitary District to discuss next steps on what everyone wants to do with the property. I would also add that we do have a few items tonight that are on the consent calendar about the indirect potable reuse program. And most of those items were initially brought to the Subcommittee previous to coming to the city council tonight. No other updates.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cauldron?
I have a brief update on the Vistra Subcommittee, which is just to say that Vistra has submitted now an Economic and Fiscal Impact Report. They have been discussing issues around economic and fiscal impacts during their community meetings that they've held, but has, have not until last week submitted anything formal to the city. And so staff is currently reviewing that information and has shared with the Subcommittee, and a Subcommittee meeting is scheduled to review that information.
Thank you, tomorrow?
Yep.
Thank you. And Downtown Design District, any updates?
Yeah, Downtown Design District, staff has completed its summary memo of the work that was conducted by the Downtown Design District Subcommittee, and will be presenting that likely tomorrow to, to the Subcommittee members, Landrum and Edwards, Councilmembers Landrum and Edwards. And we'll be, staff will be available to answer any questions they have and support next steps.
Thank you very much. And I know our Harbor Director is not here, but we do have no current updates on Offshore Wind. There's no activity on the city's end. So with that, we're going to move into public comment. Before I go to public comment this evening, I'm going to, in advance, let those of you who are interested in the consent agenda know that I am going to pull Items 7B and 7C from the consent agenda, and I will offer public comment on those items after discussion. So public comment is for items not on the agenda. And because I have so many speaker slips, I have decided to provide two minutes, or less, two minutes instead of three. The clerk has set the timer, and I'm going to take the first couple that I have that are going to do two minutes, and someone who said they'd do one plus, and we'll go from there. So first up, Mr. Vestafelt, and followed by NO. So it says NO, no? Oh, no, wait, hang on. Followed by, Rigmar? Rigmar, thank you.
Good evening, distinguished council ladies. Appreciate you being here today. I just want to comment on the car show that we had here in the first week in May. Another successful car show it was. We had like 536 vehicles, which is kind of average what we have, including Nevada, Arizona, and British Columbia, Canada, and Oregon. It, we had to playlist some weather. We had to update our time for the rewards going from 4 o'clock to 1:30, and it worked out just, just fine. Want to really especially thank the Rotary Club of Morro Bay that does the barbecue. In two, approximately two hours, they served 460 plates, and they did a fantastic job. And so we really appreciate it. And all the volunteers, there's well over 100 volunteers when we get everything done with the crews and Saturday and prepping for, putting up notices and et cetera. But I just wanted to share with you a photo of this, and this was at approximately 10:30 in the morning. And keep in mind that this is from Monterey Street up towards the east, and it's the same amount all the way down to Market Street, and of course, Main Street from, on Main Street also. So there's an awful lot of attending people here. This is all free to them to come and see. So again, just want to show you that it's a well-attended event. Again, thank you ever so much for listening to us, and we'll be at the car show next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vestafelt. Rigmar?
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Rigmar. I was told yesterday that someone who would be asking the council today to discuss a ceasefire resolution on the war between Israel and Hamas. If these people are part of the crazy Free Palestinian group we watch on TV these days who screams "We want Hitler back" and "Genocide Joe", then for sure, please do not get involved. We all feel for both the Palestinian people and the Jewish people, but to set Palestinians free is to get rid of Hamas, who are the ones who has committed genocide for years. Our council's responsibility is to govern our community here in Morro Bay. In my opinion, as a Morro Bay council, you should stay out of it. Really, should be none of your business. And since I'm here now, I will spout out a few other of my opinions. I want more housing in Morro Bay for those who work here, and less commercial. I'm against tall buildings anywhere in Morro Bay. I think we should have signs where you enter Morro Bay that we have maximum speed limit of 25 miles an hour everywhere. I do not want a battery plant and no wind farms. And I thank Sarah for having the town hall meetings. And I love Morro Bay in blooms. And I mostly watch the city meetings on TV, and I always look forward to hear what Terry and Kiernan, who never says his name, will say. Thank you.
Thank you, Rigmar. The next three speaker slips I have are David Yo, Eden Bailey, and Gary Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor Wixom, council. That's going to be a hard act to follow. I, my name is David Yo. I live in Morro Bay, have been for seven years. I would rather be kayaking right now. I come this evening not as a representative of any group, but my heart tells me that there needs to be a ceasefire. And I'm, I'm asking that the council will consider a ceasefire agenda to be able to discuss with some of the people of the city and around the, I'm sorry. We need to, I think I will stop here. Thank you very much. But please consider, I would like to be able to speak with whomever of you that might show interest and that we could maybe come up with some, some ideas. There are people in the county that are suffering right now for what is going on over there, on both sides. And I think there needs to be a ceasefire. And all hostages and prisoners on both sides need to be returned. There are 84 cities in, in the United States who have accepted a ceasefire agenda. 18 of them are in California. I would like for my city, Morro Bay, the Central Coast, to consider participating. Anyway, peace. Thank you.
Morro Bay City Council, my name is Eden Bailey. I address you today to plead for your help in stopping the ongoing genocide in Gaza by agending an immediate permanent ceasefire resolution. Agendizing a ceasefire will show your constituents that you value human life, morality, justice, and peace for all. Our Palestinian brothers and sisters need our help. The Palestinian community in our area is small and need our voices in advocating for their people's rights to freedom. Currently, our United States tax dollars are funding this genocide. By putting forth a permanent ceasefire resolution, you are making a statement that you'd announce the killing of innocent men, women, and children. Children who have been violently massacred, blown to pieces, burned alive, and beheaded. Since October 7, we have witnessed heinous atrocities committed against innocent Palestinians. Just this past Saturday, over 270 Palestinians in Gaza were brutally slaughtered to recover four Israeli hostages. 400 human beings were severely injured in this attack. Over 270 lives for four. Tell me then, are 67 Palestinian lives equal to one Israeli life? How do we measure the value of a life? What will it take for this needless bloodshed to end? How many more sons, daughters, brothers, grandchildren, grandparents? Human souls must be executed before this ends. Our words matter, our actions matter, our voices matter. We can enact change on behalf of the Palestinian people, and we must enact change on behalf of the Palestinian people. As John Lewis said, "If not us, then who? If not now, then when?" Please, I appeal to your hearts and minds. Do not merely consider what of these people were your family and friends. Palestinians are members of our humankind and deserve the most basic freedom of life and liberty from genocide. They are innocent, and they are suffering unimaginable evil done unto them, not to mention the intentional destruction of culture, infrastructure, hospitals, universities, and even cemeteries by the Israeli military and government. We have responsibility as Americans to stand up for what is right and to protect those who need sanctuary. Our country was founded on the beliefs that all men are created equal and independent. That from that equal creation, they derive rights inherent and inalienable, among which are the preservation of life and liberty and the pursuit of happiness. Please stand by these beliefs and stand up for the Palestinian people in your community. Thank you.
Okay, I got to cut a minute off of this. I had this scheduled for three minutes. So, okay, Gary Johnson's my name. I'm calling this Session 1, Part 4. Part 5 will be next meeting. So I'll cut that. The first two years, 60% of the best systems fail. But lithium batteries are basically safe until a problem may occur due to component failures. Now, component failures, when they fail, they cause the batteries to fail. And then you're going to have a thermal runaway. So let me go down to the crust of the whole report. In California, we have three of these facilities. Now, Moss Landing, 2019, three failures. Third one, they had to evacuate. California, 2023, the Valley Center Energy down in San Diego, two, two catastrophes. Businesses and homes were evacuated in three miles. This is the big one, just happened. Otay Basin was a major BES, best failure facility. Forty firefighters, five engines remain on the site several weeks before it was under control. Now, the Mesa firefighters, they are the real heroes that kept the temperature below 1,000 degrees. Once it reaches 1,000 degrees, it's 4th of July, it'll explode. It'll put toxic fumes everywhere. So it wasn't for our fire department and our police department taking, taking over the, the whole town and making people safe. So now, another thing that just happened, there's a new, another new best site proposed in California. That's down in Southern California around Escudito and San Marcos. And that's going to have 22 acres. And they interviewed one of the people, and then he said, "This could be him across the street. I'll walk across the street, and they're going to have 22 acres of these bunkers." Sorry, I have more to say, but I can't. Do you all hang in there, no?
Next up, I have Carolyn Kruger, followed by Karen Aguilera, followed by Robert Skinner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. I'm speaking tonight in support of a proposal for the Morro Bay City Council to agendize a resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Some of you may think that this is not a local issue, that it is not within your purview. I would suggest that it is most certainly a local issue for Slow County's Palestinian, Middle Eastern, and Muslim communities. A show of support and compassion from their local government- A show of support and compassion from their local governments would be warmly welcomed. They are suffering with grief, fear, and helplessness as they learn of family members and friends in Gaza who have been killed, maimed, and tortured, and who face starvation and disease. Palestinians are enduring hell on earth under constant bombardment. Since October, 70,000 tons of bombs have been dropped on Gaza. That is twice what was dropped on Dresden, Hamburg, and London combined during World War II. And Gaza's unexploded ordinance could take 14 years to clear. Devastation to Gaza's infrastructure has rendered sanitation virtually nonexistent. 270,000 tons of solid waste has accumulated in Gaza. El Moasi, the humanitarian safe zone, which is smaller than London Heathrow, has only 121 toilets for over 500,000 people. That's over 4,000 people having to share each toilet. The attacks on Gaza have also created global environmental harm. In a report in The Guardian, scientists estimate that more than 281,000 tons of carbon dioxide were generated by Israel's aerial bombardment and ground invasion of Gaza in the first two months of the war, which is greater than the annual carbon footprint of more than 20 of the world's most climate-vulnerable nations. Further, the Times of Israel survey in March showed that 55% of Americans disapprove of Israel's military campaign in Gaza, while only 36% approve. Americans are negatively impacted emotionally, psychologically, and financially. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Aguilar, and I'm representing Morro Bay Beautiful. I got welcoming news today from Carlos Mendoza from the Public Works that the prototype for the trash recycling containers for the Embarcadero were nearly completed. In the next week or so, it will be on display at Anchor Park for the community to see and weigh in. This is exciting news. I want to thank Carlos for his dedication to this project, and also thank Greg Kolik for helping our dream become a reality. Thank you. And for the council for financing this wonderful project. This has been a dream for the members of Morro Bay Beautiful for several years, as Greg can attest. The containers will mimic what Cambria did in their town. Flower planters will top the containers to offer beauty and to keep the seagulls at bay. I want to thank Morro Bay Blooms for taking the task, for taking on the task of planting and maintaining the flower beds as they do spectacularly throughout our town. And finally, I look forward to working with Carlos and Greg regarding the vintage art cans that have been part of the fabric of our town since Warren and Phyllis Dorn began Morro Bay Beautiful 43 years ago, and they are the ones who started the art can tradition. Twenty-eight cans were sponsored and funded through private donations with local artists creating them. From the first can that still sits outside of Dorn's Breaker Cafe, commandeered in the early '80s, beautifully designed by local artist Jeff O'Neill, to the art can and the cloisters that were sponsored by Hazel and Ian Eckerson in 2021 by Kim Hickson. These cans are well-known in the community, and it will be my pleasure to make sure that they find a new home in our funky little town where they can continue to add to the beauty and the history of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Skinner, and I'm assuming that you all received the email. And what I have here in front of me is, I also sent you a copy of what we will be submitting tonight. It's a ceasefire resolution. We understand that you cannot take action on this tonight. We understand that this is the beginning of a process, it's the beginning of the democratic process. And we understand that, you know, starting tomorrow, we can meet and we can get things to get it agendized. One thing I hope you will notice that this is an apolitical document. It doesn't even refer to the humanitarian crisis as a genocide. There's no finger pointing, there's no taking of sides, there's no bemoaning anything. What this is, is a document that will make a statement that this community basically recognizes that they have Palestinian neighbors, and that their Palestinian neighbors, they number only in the dozens. They don't have political action committees, they don't have a voice. In fact, we've gone to Salud Carvajal, he's ignored us. We've gone to city council in San Luis, they've ignored us. We went to Grover Beach last night. Hopefully, they're going to react upon this. It's too early to tell. And we're pleading with you. You know, let's, democracy go in place. Let people decide. I know there are people here who have been making negative comments about the other speakers. You know, let everybody speak about this, and, you know, let's get this going, and let's, Morro Bay be the first city in this county to stand with their other 75 other cities who said, "Yeah, let's have a ceasefire resolution." And let us show our neighbors that we care about them, because their suffering is beyond anything that anybody has suffered so far. Thank you.
Next up, I have Terry Simons, followed by Jackie Garza, followed by Andrew Gould.
My name is Terry Simons. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council and staff. If I could have my first slide up. Big apologies of the council. I don't generally make personal pleas, but I won't be able to go home tonight if I don't bring this to your attention. We have an ongoing and ever-growing issue in our neighborhood and in various places around town. Are we going to see that first one? Of vehiculately housed people, particularly in campers, that routinely invade our neighborhood, which, okay, I can deal with that. What I can't deal with is the dogs off-leash, the late-night partying, the yelling and screaming of domestic abuse. It's got to stop, and we've been trying to work with the police department using the ordinances that we have on the books, but those ordinances don't seem to be quite strong enough, and our policies are not quite specific enough to deal with the, this onslaught. If we don't stop making our community welcome to these sorts of transient vacation rentals, not vacation rentals, vacation vehicles, we're going to end up like Los Osos, and ultimately we'll have to support an operation like the county tried to do at Kansas Avenue, and it was a disaster. So we need to make every effort to push these people out of town, whatever that takes, and hope that you can respond accordingly. I guess I'm not going to get my slides. Okay. Well, if I can reserve, if I can reserve my last 20 seconds when they get my slides up.
Yeah, well, we'll try. Our Assistant City Clerk isn't familiar with the AGP system. There you go, Terry. We'll hold the buzzer for you for a minute.
Thank you. This is one vehicle that routinely appears in our neighborhood. This is, he's parked in front of a local business, walking his dog, and he happens to have the dog on a leash, but he is using a neighborhood shopping cart, I think that one's from Albertson's, to move his personal property around town. We can have the other one now. Second one. This is a vehicle that parks routinely just down the street from us. He routinely leaves his pit bull outside his car, and the bull, the dog will approach anybody approaching it, and very intimidating. And this guy is really a problem. He is routinely drunk and on the street, normally just in his bathroom. My wife has been insulted and assaulted by him several times in trying to talk to him about his dog. Thank you.
Hello, Council members. I'm so glad to be here tonight, and I'm so glad to have the opportunity to talk to you. A lot of, I've heard a lot of talk about Gaza today, and I'm going to talk to you about it, too. So what is and has been happening in Gaza for the past nine months is without question a massacre of extreme proportions. And yes, a genocide. It doesn't take a PhD in English to understand and to have some kind of, you know, to be able to, I think, make that understanding known. We don't need to be in the ICC or ICJ to be able to define genocide. However, I know that's, that's what we use as a guideline. However, I think if you just read, you'll know this is a genocide with intent. We've heard several Israeli political figures and settlers declare they'd like to see all the Palestinians gone. They'd like to kill them all and push the survivors into Egypt. Now, we've all seen that. We've all heard that. Massacres and displacement of the Palestinians is nothing new. It's been happening since 1948. And in fact, just because we know there's intent of genocide, because they're already talking about letting Israelis move into Gaza, all the Palestinians are not gone yet. They're already talking about moving into Gaza and building homes. Jared Kushner mentioned the very valuable waterfront property that he'd just love to develop. Some local Slow County government officials have said passing a ceasefire resolution would cause more division. But I say, whether or not it causes division is not the issue here. Standing up for an immediate ceasefire is a moral issue, and I'll leave you with that.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Gould, and I'm a student at Cal Poly. I'm here this evening to respectfully call for Morro Bay City Council to agendize a resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Israel-Palestine. It has been nearly eight months since the horrors of October 7th, the capturing of innocent civilians, and the start of a brutal, brutal massacre against Palestinian people in the Gaza Strip. As I speak here today, we're witnessing one of the worst crimes that will, that has been, that will be remembered as one of the worst crimes of the 21st century. At least 37,000 are dead. We have seen children incinerated alive, we have seen croplands scorched, we have seen people blown into bits. All the while, the Israeli government calls for Gaza's Nakba, calls for damage instead of accuracy, and ultimately calls for the eradication of the people of Gaza. As a German-American whose family lived during the Nazi regime, I recognize that this is not the language of war, this is the language of genocide. I, as a Slow resident, you might be wondering why I'm here at Morro Bay talking about this. Well, it's because Slow City Council has continually refused our pleas for a ceasefire resolution to be passed. They refuse to even consider it. If this city agendizes and then passes a ceasefire, it will put a ceasefire resolution, it will put pressure on local communities to start passing this resolution. It will put pressure, of course, it's a small amount, but it would put pressure on the federal government to end its unconditional support for the state of Israel, and it would open up the door for anti-apartheid legislation so that we can start the process of beginning to divest and boycott the Israeli apartheid regime. This is a small city, I know, on the California central coast, but small actions, when put together, they have the capacity to make the world a better place. In the words of Archbishop Desmond Tutu, "If you're neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." Thank you very much, and free Palestine.
Next up, I have Stephen Page, followed by Drew Jacobson, followed by Denise Jacobson.
For three minutes, and I shortened it to two and a half, and I'll try and make it even shorter than that. You have before you this, this, the copy of my, of my text, or what I'm going to speak, so I assume that you'll be able to read it at some, in some future moment. Okay. I respectfully, is my time running?
Yes.
I respectfully request that the City Council of Morro Bay devote and second and agendize in the, for the next session, the creation of the Morro Bay Energy Storage Advisory Board with the purpose of researching the many new methods of energy storage that could be utilized on the old PG&E power plant and tank farm site that are safe, compatible with tourism, and require no emergency planning. There are many storage methods outlined by the state-funded California Energy Storage Alliance, which I sent you a link to. I, I, I think a link to the web, okay. Form Energy is one of these storage systems that uses rust as, to store energy, and liquid air energy storage uses liquid air to store energy. Both batteries, lithium batteries risk air and groundwater pollution on a scale well beyond the original 1955 power plant. Trust your instincts. Look at the Tesla Megapack warranty, and look at the emergency fire response plan. The CESA webinar will give you a full energy picture. That's what you need, is a Morro Bay, that's why you need a Morro Bay Energy Storage Advisory Board. It would give you informed choices and distance you from people who would like to take advantage of you for lithium battery product placement. All, all methods are experimental and new. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I am one of the 75 private mooring owners on the bay. I would like to comment on the Harbor Department's SCIF permit program, which requires a boat owner to sign an agreement in order to be granted a dock parking permit for their SCIF. A SCIF is vital, is vital to a boater and is the only practical means of transportation between the shore and their boat. Without a SCIF, a boater has no way to access his or her boat. The Harbor Department either accepts the applicant's request for the SCIF permit or denies the request, in which case the boater is required to move his or her SCIF from the docks, or the harbor staff will confiscate it. That's basically how the program is designed to work. This brings us to Rule F in the SCIF permit program. That rule states that if an applicant has ever failed to follow any Harbor Department rule, they can be denied a SCIF permit. This rule gives the Harbor authority to deny that vital SCIF permit for even the most subjective reasons, with absolutely no way for the boat owner to question the decision, and no procedure to follow that allows mediated forms to the boat owner who stands to lose access to their boat, which could be valued in the tens of thousands of dollars, has no way to voice their defense. The SCIF program is set to start officially July 1st. Morro Bay boating community has serious issues with signing an agreement that can deny a boater the right to access their boat and mooring property with no right to challenge the Harbor Department's decision. If a boat owner takes a stance of not signing this poorly-written permit contract, the boater will immediately lose all access to their boat and mooring. The boaters of Morro Bay are asking you to please consider this issue as a future agenda item and advise the Harbor Department to stop the July 1st start date of this poorly-written and questionable legal program. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Denise Jacobson. I own a mooring on Morro Bay. We have tried to get together with the Harbor Department to resolve this issue, and as of today, he is too busy, and we are not one of his priorities. To us, this is a priority. If you read the policy, it states that they will be giving parking permits to everybody that owns a mooring, first come, first served. After that, you'll be on a priority list, which I don't know what that means. That could mean months, years, I don't know, but I'll have no access to my boat. Now, when you speak to Ted, he will tell you, of course, that's not going to happen. You will all have a mooring, or access to your mooring. So I'm not sure what is right. Is Ted right what he tells you, or is he right with the policy that he expects you to sign? You know, it's like going to a used car salesman. Your payments will be $200, sign here. How do you know that? I mean, he's, every time you talk to him, it's like, oh, don't worry about anything, just sign the paper and move forward. I have a real issue signing a legal contract with my lease that says something that the Harbor Department doesn't even state correctly. Another issue is Ted will tell you that most of people have signed their policies? Of course they have. They are being threatened. If you do not sign this, you will not be able to park your dink, and you will not be able to get to your boat. Thank you.
Next up is Gregory Anderson, followed by Barry Brannan. Next up is Gregory Anderson, followed by Barry Brannan, followed by Nancy Cooper.
Good evening, everyone. I'm speaking on the SCIF permit issue as well. My name is Gregory Anderson. I am a local liveaboard off of Tidylins, been out here about six years now. I'm employed at one of the museums here in the county. I volunteer with the Moral Bay Maritime Museum. I'm a local maritime historian. My issue is so much as a lot of the wording with how this has all been written out, my interpretation of it really shows us that we are liable for any damage that happens to this dock, be it ourselves, a guest, a member of the public, or a member of the Harbor Patrol, or a city staff member. Another issue is that when they were first looking into doing a SCIF permit, I was contacted by Becca Kelly to get my opinions on the logistics of it, as my SCIF had been impounded by the Harbor Patrol without any notice. They just kind of took it from the end of the dock one day, after which we took that as an opportunity to kind of grow from it. Becca Kelly reached out to me to discuss this. And as it was written at that time, or how she was saying it, was that the permits would be included for a liveaboard. We're already charged a lot, and a lot of our amenities are offered for the public as well, for free. We get in the clothes shower that's paid with quarters. However, then there has been no more discussion, and I would hope that we could, again, as my fellow boaters, mooring holders, and Moral Bay residents have mentioned, perhaps agendize this, and maybe we can put a pause on this to discuss this a little bit more, at least just go into it a little bit more detail. I think that it would be better for the community and all if we actually took the time to discuss this one-on-one a little bit more. I really appreciate you folks all for your time. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and City Attorney and City Manager. And a recent, my name is Barry Brannan from Moral Bay. At the last council meeting, there was a question about the sign ordinance regarding political signs. And it was pronounced at that meeting that the political signs that were up before the time limit that was set in the current sign law, that ordinance wouldn't be enforced. And my question is tonight, what other ordinances would be enforced? That seems like a unique way to run the business. So I would like to, with some good help, we did a little research, and we found that in 2002, Ordinance 493, which I have a copy of, it specifically talks about political signs. And it says, political signs, it said, political signs shall not exceed 64 square feet in area, that's huge, and per site, and shall permit it only on private property. But then further, the old ordinance said, for a period not to exceed 60 days preceding an election, such signs shall be removed within seven days after the election. Well, that's when the ordinance was changed, and I have a copy of the change, it was signed by Roger Anderson, the mayor. So what I would like to suggest is we take a review of our sign ordinance that has been changed, and ignoring this previous ordinance, and direct, come back to Council with a request to make this sign ordinance in place. And I have copies of that today, and I'll give it to the City Attorney and the City Manager. Thank you.
I'm a mooring owner in the harbor, and all the issues I have have been addressed from other people, except for one or two. What happens if they give a permit to a dinghy, and that particular person has to get rid of that dinghy because something happens to it? They have to pay another fee? That's not right to them. And it isn't right that they can't change boats? And it says that, it says you can't do that. And basically what everybody else said, I'm sorry, sorry.
I have two more speaker slips. After these two speaker slips, public comment will be open to anyone who has not turned it in on items not on the agenda. Next up is Joe Solano, followed by Steve Yarlene.
Yes, my name is Joe Solano. I have a mooring in the harbor, and I've got some issues with the SCIF storage permit. The first is, why is it even necessary? We have a rule in place, it's Ordinance 9.81, is what the sign says at the dock, that if you are a mooring owner, put your mooring number on your SCIF. And that's what's required. That's what, when we first started a couple of years ago with living out here, having our liveaboard permit, that was included. We got a place to park our boat, our dinghy. Now, they want to change that, that's fine, I guess, but let's enforce the rule that's already there. I can take you right now and show you three boats on the Tidylins dock. One of them is sat there for so long, it's got life growing in it. I mean, it's an aquarium. There's another one that belongs to a person. I've asked her, do you have a boat on the harbor? No. Do you have a friend that has a boat on the harbor? No. She's just keeping her boat there. It's been there for over a month. Harbor Patrol has been there repeatedly since that boat is tied up there. It's still there. They haven't confiscated it. Let them do their job. Let them confiscate these boats that do not have the permits on them, the mooring number on it. And there's no need, absolutely zero need, for further non-enforced guidelines. Maintain the dock. There's boards on the Tidylins dock right now that do not have screws in them. They are loose. I could take it out and throw it in the ocean and watch it float away. I won't do that because it damages my dock, the dock that I use to access the shore. There's cleats that are not necessarily firmly attached. If we tie our boats to that, there's going to be an issue. Well, thank you, and have a nice day.
My name is Pirate Steve Yarlene. I've lived in Moral Bay since 1991. I've worked, I've done everything one can do for a living in this town, including build homes, worked at the dock, unloaded fish, worked as a commercial fisherman. I've worked with all the most famous captains and everyone in the bay. And what's appalling is the treatment of our city's Harbor Department, of the residents and their neighbors and people, that the reason why they have a job is to help serve us and protect us, not bully us, not try to intimidate us and tell us when we can go to our own boats that we worked so hard to even own. Blood, sweat, and tears goes into every boat owner and their vessel. And now, and, okay, friends of the harbor, fine, you need to raise money for things, fine, but it just seems to be a little odd that they are only interested in things that they think are worth something, so that they can resell it and put it in their own pockets. I don't know, I have an issue with that, and I always have, and I always will. But that's the way it is, friends of the harbor. Anyhow, I hope that the City Council can suggest to whoever's in charge, or going to be in charge of the Harbor Department, to at least treat the boat owners with a little respect, the working people of the bay, and leaseholders, which I'm all of the above. I don't like to be intimidated, threatened, and especially since we just had the worst winter ever. Thank you for your time.
Kind of make this a bit short. Yeah, I wanted to, first off, as far as a wild bill, I was kind of shocked to hear, and condolences to Kathy. I know he had a colorful life, would be, to put it mildly, but anyway, just wanted to kind of reach out. Last two weeks ago, he talked about, someone was talking about wanting to buy the Breakers as far as the old white building next to Dorn's. And I think that's an excellent idea to save the parking lot down below, because I know parking's a real issue on the Embarcadero, and to actually think about switching gears with the big mega project that's currently proposed to actually save that historical building, and devote the rest to the parking, or, you know, since parking is such an issue. But I think if you're going to do that, is first, I think you probably have to make the decision to switch gears, and then, secondly, I think you also want to put that out for a variety of people. If you go that route, to get a lot of input on what can go there. I'm not saying the people that brought that up aren't the right fit, but I think you have to have it out for everyone. The other thing is, yeah, Otae Mesa, with the largest battery plant in the world, has been burning for three weeks, and I've been watching the ads that says, $900 million Vista Plant coming to Moral Bay. It's safe, it's secure. And I think the main thing is, we need to, the Coastal Commission, the 800-pound Rilla's in town for three days, they have the ultimate decision on this. They override the PUC. PU, yeah, I think that, the Public Electrical, yeah. So as far as getting out there, public comments at 9:00 in the morning, and I suggest, if you're interested, to go to the commission. Thanks. And that's at the end at Moral Bay.
My name is Corinne Albers, and I've been a mooring owner since January 2020. When my husband and I purchased our private mooring and then our sailboat, the Harbor Department Rules and Regulations stated that storage of one SCIF was included for private moorings at the docks. This statement has now been removed from the current rules and regulations. Due to this change, we attended the last meeting with the Harbor Advisory Board on May 2nd to express our concerns. However, we never received updated agreements. So we consulted with two different lawyers for their guidance on signing the new agreement, as our investment in the mooring and sailboat were predicated on the included SCIF storage, and we wanted to make sure we weren't signing anything limiting. After reviewing the agreement alongside how private moorings have been managed historically by the city, both lawyers strongly advised against signing this, and presented strong cases that some of the clauses listed are not enforceable. That being said, pursuing legal action is costly in both time and resources for both the city and ourselves, and I see no reason we can't resolve this in cooperation. Therefore, I propose that the SCIF storage program deadline be extended, and all signings paused until concerns are addressed. I primarily have two suggestions to the agreements, and I'm happy to discuss them further. I do want it to be said, though, that many of the people living on boats are on fixed incomes and are in vulnerable situations. I am not one of those people, but I'm happy to band alongside them and use my own resources and time to help them in their own ways. In closing, I'd like to highlight that there have been many concerns from both mooring holders and the Harbor Advisory Board about these new policies and agreements, yet no modifications have been made. A request to pause all signings of the agreements was denied in the last meeting. The current Harbor Director, who will soon be leaving, mentioned that these policies were implemented before his tenure, and that he won't be here to oversee them. If both the mooring holders and the Harbor Advisory Board have concerns, and the current Director is distancing himself from these changes, which can be heard in the recorded meeting at minute 25 and 50 seconds, it raises the question, who benefits from these changes and is pushing them through? Thank you.
I'm here also to support the ceasefire resolution. I don't think I can convey any better that, all the suffering that people in Gaza are having. But beyond that, I also feel like we are paying for it. I personally do not want to pay a single dollar into massacre, killing people. So I urge you to do the right thing and agendize a ceasefire resolution. The suffering is immense, and as Martin Luther King said, and I am paraphrasing, because I don't remember exactly, but the worst part is not the deeds or the things that the bad people are doing, is the indifference of the good people. We have the opportunity to make our voices heard. It's the most basic human, it's like, do not kill anymore. So I invite you to join these voices that are saying, please don't use my money to kill more people. Thank you.
In honor of Pride Month, let's talk about a couple of other P-words, perspective and perception. I was once forced to rework people's perceptions of me to save my life. I was at most nine years old, and I remember standing in my room, staring at my bookshelf and the collection of my secret unicorn books lining its shelves. I decided, then and there, they had to go. There was a thought in my mind that is clear to this day. I have to be strong. I have to survive. Mind you, nine years old. To save my own life, unicorns in bright colors had to give way to toy guns and camouflage. Let's talk about something a little closer to home. Recently, I was looking at the moralbay.org tourism resources, and was not at all surprised to find that every picture and video exclusively featured happy little white people. But I was, however, shocked, to the point of laughing out loud, when I read a blog post that had the line, "Despite brave retaliation efforts, indigenous Californians are forced to assimilate into European society. Not only do I follow modern landback movements, but I'm also tangentially aware of the state-sanctioned genocide of indigenous populations during the Gold Rush." To quote Californian's first governor, "That a war of extermination will continue to be waged between the races until the Indian race becomes extinct must be expected." Well, we cannot anticipate this result, but with painful regret, the inevitable destiny of the race is beyond the power and wisdom of man to avert." And I kept thinking to myself, reading this 1851 State of the State address, that this is exactly the same justification used for other genocides, like, for instance, the one going on right now.
Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands?
Hi, Mayor Wixom. We have one raised hand, which is Linda Winters. I will allow her to speak now. Okay, Linda, you could go ahead and talk now.
I am the voice from above. Greetings to all the mayor, to the council, and all the staff. I am Linda Winters, from the same mobile home park here in Moral Bay for the last 30 years. And I'm trying to keep my attendance record in good standing for attending city council meetings via Zoom. They count. First, I want to thank all of you for that offered help to me in the past week after my surgery. I truly do live in the best place on earth, and I'm getting better and trying to behave, and that's not so very easy for me. There are a few things I'd like to mention on the events that have happened since last we met. First, congratulations to all the super citizens that were honored in the Chamber Gala. I had the chance to hobnob with all of you, and I cannot tell you how many wonderful folks that my husband and I have known and enjoyed in their businesses for over 20 years. A few quick comments on all the subcommittee reports. I really like this style. Number one, Zara's Downtown Town Hall report on downtown. I wish I could have been there, but I sent you some of my ideas, and I will enjoy your work. been there, but I sent you some of my ideas, and I will enjoy future workshops. Items two and items three, I'm not in favor of offshore wind and the battery power plant not in our backyard. I want to continue to keep our city the way that it is. But number four, in the water district, I hope that Morro Bay will continue on with its water conservation restrictions. The twice a week watering method, Wednesdays and Sundays before 10:00 AM and after 4:00 PM, has been a very successful program for a lot of years. Let's keep it that way. And, and if we have some extra water, we can sell it and buy some more trees. Okay, that's all for now. I'll see you all on January, June 25th, hopefully in person.
Thank you, Linda.
One more public comment. My name is Betty Winholz, and it's very difficult to sit in an audience where you can feel sides being taken over death. And so I just want to let my voice be heard, that I believe it's possible to write a resolution that does not take sides. Because the resolution would speak in terms of humanity on both sides, and that I think as a group, none of us really support killing, and that we would want there to be a ceasefire because both sides need to step back. So I would encourage the council to agendize that. Thank you.
AGP, are there any more raised hands?
Hi, Mayor. We have no other raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I appreciate all your comments tonight, all of us do, and we will certainly take your concerns and considerations and your concerns and comments under consideration. So thank you for your time. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And as I said earlier, I am going to pull 7B and 7C. So I'm going to open public comment on the other items on the consent. If anyone wants to speak to those items, if you want to speak to those two items and can't stay, please feel free. Otherwise, I would appreciate, is that a public comment? I'm pulling those two for public comment. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I turned in a speaker slip on, on the two items that you've pulled. Did you want to hear comments individually or on the, on the whole issues, two issues together?
B and C?
Yeah.
I think that there's a presentation that's going to be done. Are they going to be combined, Mr. Qualick, the two items? Are they separate?
At your pleasure. We can combine them.
I'll wait. I'd like to hear the presentation before I comment. Thank you.
Anyone else for comment on the consent agenda items A, D, and E? AGP, are there any raised hands?
Hi, Mayor. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on those items and bring it back to council. Does anyone want to pull anything else?
I would like to pull item 7E, please.
7E? So I'd be looking for a motion, or I'll just make a motion to approve items 7A and 7D and ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Councilmember Landrum, if you'd like to do 7E first?
Yeah, it'll be really quick.
Presentation. Thank you.
I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to the amazing report that we, on the parking lot rehab, we saved seven, over $7,000. The bid, the actual job came in under the estimate, and I, I think that's amazing. It's a great trend. I hope we keep going in that direction. And that's all.
Motion.
And so I, I move that we pass item 7E.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'll move on to council. You want to hear the two items together or separate? Together is fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Again, Greg Qualick, Director of Public Works, and at the council's pleasure, we can discuss these two items together. They are somewhat related, mostly not related. I will, rather than give a long drawn out presentation, we do have some slides that we can go through, but I, I would like to just give an overview of what these items are requesting and ask Mr. Heimel from Confluence Engineering, who's our program manager for the recycled water project, to present mostly on 7B, again, at a very high level. And then Mr. Maris Hansen, our Utilities Division Manager, to present on item 7C, again, at a high level. And then we can make ourselves available for questions, if that's okay. And so item 7B relates to our IPR or Recycled Water Project. The city council in November was presented with information about next steps for the project. The city council asked city staff to send a letter to the State Revolving Fund staff to get clarification and confirmation of minimum implementation requirements so as to save money and to keep the project really aligned with the size of our city and not go beyond what our, our needs are. And we did that, and we received that confirmation and reported that back to the city council. And so since then, we've been working diligently now to continue with next steps for the recycled water project. And those involve four contract actions by the city council. One is a design contract for Cannon, who will be designing our, or, you know, if, if the city council approves, will be designing the injection wells for that project. One, and that's a new contract. One is a contract amendment for Confluence Engineering for our program manager of that project. One is for, I'm thinking three Cs, Cannon, Confluence, and Corolo. Corolo is our former program manager for the Wharf program. We're removing Corolo's program management role, but we are continuing to keep them on for very specific tasks related to funding and financing and permitting work. And we can talk about that in detail tonight if the council would like. And then finally, for GSI, and that's more of kind of an urgent contract amendment, because we have some work coming up this week that we would like their help on ultimately in an effort to save the city money on two tasks that we believe we can do at the same time, archaeological and hydrogeological tasks due to some borings that, that we have. And then beyond that, we have another item, 7C, which is not related to recycled water, but we, we do have a, on the books, a council-approved and budgeted project called the Morro Basin Well Field Rehabilitation Project. Our extraction wells that the city relies on when state water has shutdowns are old. And one of them is in such bad shape that we don't use it anymore. We have a larger project where we'd like to drill a new well and then also rehabilitate several of our other existing wells that, that we use. Currently, without those wells, during times of state water shutdown, we would not be able to provide water for the residents and customers of Morro Bay. And so that's a rehabilitation project, as I mentioned, that, that would envision a new well being drilled. And so to save money and time and effort, city staff decided when putting out an RFP for design services for the injection wells, we can couple that RFP to also include design services for the extraction well. And we did find a qualified firm that, that can do those services. And so that item 7C is only for the extraction well piece. It is not funded through the Wharf. It is not, it's not receiving loans from the Wharf or anything like that. We just wanted to have the RFP together to save time and money, which we believe we've, we've done. And so Dan Heimel, our project manager for the IPR project, can go into some detail about item 7B and what we're requesting, with the exception of the Confluence piece, which I could talk a little bit about. So please, Dan. Yeah, thanks, Greg. Members of the council, Mayor Wixom. Yeah, happy to be back here in front of you, presenting on the, the Wharf program, specifically the recycled water component of the Wharf program. As Greg described, we were presenting in November on the recommended strategy for implementation of Phase One back in March with the confirmation of the State Water Resource Control Board's requirements for that initial phase of implementation. And so the contracts and/or contract amendments that are being brought forth today are allow, to allow the city to continue on that path of implementing the recycled water component of the Wharf program to meet the requirements of the, the four funding and financing agencies and to meet the scheduled deadlines associated with those funding and financing agreements. And so, yeah, I'll just quickly go through each of the, the contracts here. The first contract is for recycled water facilities design. As described in the staff report, the city released an RFP on March 15th. It received two responsive proposals based on review of those proposals and interviews with the consultants. The selection committee is recommending that Cannon be selected as the consultant for recycled water design. Recycled water design would include design of the equipping of the injection wells, the above-ground piping and appurtenances necessary for an injection well to operate effectively, design of the recycled water pipelines that would convey recycled water from the current terminus of the IPR pipeline along the bike path to the series of injection wells, design of non-potable recycled water connections to Lilac Kaiser Park and Morro Bay High School to offset demand for potable water, and then design of a recycled water fill station, which is likely a requirement of the coastal development permit ag mitigation requirements. And Cannon is a local qualified firm that is very familiar with the, the local constraints that you have to work within when trying to design and deliver a public works infrastructure project in the coastal zone. And their, their proposal really included, in response to the RFP, two, two primary components, the base fee, which is the design of the recycled water facilities. And then included in the recommendation is a inclusion of a 10% contingency to allow there to be additional budget that the city manager could authorize should we run into unforeseen conditions or changes as we embark on the project. And then there are also three optional tasks included in the recommended award. One optional task is for the design of a recycled water pipeline from the intersection of Embarcadero Road and Coleman Drive to the northern extent of Embarcadero Road. The, the primary plan is to reuse the D-South feed line that runs along that section of Embarcadero Road and crosses Morro Creek. However, if in the evaluation, it's determined that we can't reuse that pipeline, then we would need to design a new pipeline along that alignment. So that's the first optional task. The section, optional task is for some flood mapping. Depending on the requirements of the funding and financing, we may need to do some flood mapping to demonstrate that the facilities can be located outside of the floodplain or that they can be designed in such a way that they, they won't be impacted by floods. And then the final optional task is for public outreach, to help people understand why this project is so critical, what are the benefits, and also, you know, what, you know, why are the specific components being done and, and, and the intent. And so that's the Cannon Agreement summary for the design of the recycled water facilities. And maybe we just jump a couple of slides down to slide six, and I can run through three and then transition back to Mr. Qualick. So the next contract amendment is for Corolo Engineers. This is a no-cost contract amendment intended to focus Corolo's remaining scope and budget on the specific tasks that the city is looking for additional support from them on. And those tasks are preparation of the permit applications for the Regional Water Quality Control Board and DD Division of Drinking Water, or DDW permits. These are the potable reuse permits that are necessary for the approval for operation, construction and operation of a potable reuse project. And Corolo has specialized technical experts that have been working on these permits. And it is the most cost-effective way to move the project forward, to retain those specialized technical experts to complete those permits and assist the city through that permitting process. The other area of focus is continued support for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Agreement and dispersment packages. Corolo has been lead on preparing the applications, preparing the minute applications, preparing the dispersment packages for the SRF loan. That is the biggest component of the city's funding and financing program for this project. And again, the members of the Corolo team have specialized expertise and knowledge of that program, and it's most cost-effective to retain them for those portion of the services. Other funding and financing services will be led by city staff or by Confluence Engineering Solutions. Program management is now longer part of Corolo's scope under this amendment. And it, yeah, it is again, intended to focus the remaining scope and budget on those key tasks. And then the final contract amendment is with GSI for Injection Well Exploratory Drilling Amendment, as Director Qualick described. I'm sorry, Dan. Can we change a slide? Oh. That one? Sorry. Yeah, I changed it on mine, but that doesn't change it there. Yeah. This is for GSI Water Solutions. The, the program team identified that there's a significant savings opportunity if we can perform the archaeological testing necessary to implement the recycled water program in conjunction with the hydrogeologic testing. So instead of two drill rigs coming out and doing testing at the same locations, we can extend the depth of the archaeological testing. We can complete both tasks under the, the same budget. This will not only save time when it comes to drill the injection wells, when we go to construct the project, those wells can be constructed in matters of days, not weeks, under this proposal. And then it also, it helps potential redesign costs. You know, under the traditional method, we would design all the infrastructure, go out and drill the well, and then if those results were unfavorable, we would have to adjust the design. But by coupling those two testing activities now, we can know that these are good viable sites that, that we can design around and have the confidence that when we go to construct, that, that those sites will work for the program. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. Thank you, Dan. And I'll pause here and see if the city council, before I talk about the Confluence Contract Amendment, if the city council would like to ask questions about these other three contract actions.
Any questions?
We're fighting over who goes. I, I have just a, a basic question about Cannon, our contract. When you said public outreach, can you explain like what it is that they're, what that means?
Yeah, so there's really two components. Included in Cannon's base scope is public outreach related to construction activities. And that, you know, we felt was a necessary element. And there, and they proposed to retain Katzen Associates, which is a public outreach consultant that supported earlier versions of the Wharf project, the Water Resources Center and Conveyance. But they also included an optional task to provide additional public outreach. You know, one of the things that the city staff has been wanting to do is, is, and really the whole recycled water program team, is utilize inserts and, and water bills and other mechanisms just to help spread awareness of, of what is this program? How does it fit into the city's water supply strategy? You know, basic stuff like where does your water come from? And, and so this would be an opportunity to take advantage of Katz and their knowledge and their expertise in the public outreach realm and, and assist the city in spreading additional knowledge.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Heimel. I, I don't have any further questions right now. Thanks.
And that is included in that contract amendment, those costs. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just curious as to, I know that Cannon was awarded this. I'm wondering, have they worked with any other local agencies on similar projects as this? on similar projects as this?
Yeah, I mean, and we actually have a couple of representatives from Cannon here, Larry Kramer and Michael Kilborn. I can take that, or you can take it?
You can start, Dan.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, that was definitely an important criteria for the team, the proposal review team. You know, injection wells are relatively unique in that, you know, we have lots of extraction wells, but there's a much smaller number of injection wells. And, yeah, Cannon did demonstrate that they had experience. Their staff had spent almost a decade, I think, working at Galleta Water District, which is a nearby water district that's been operating injection wells since the 1970s. They've really been at the forefront of injecting water. In their case, they're injecting potable water, not recycled water, but, you know, the physics are the same. And then, you know, I believe Cannon had another experience, but yes, definitely had that qualifying experience that we thought was necessary for the project. And then that local knowledge that is equally beneficial by understanding all the different constraints that we're working with.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burton, any questions on this item? Nope, councilmember.
I, let's see, I'll follow up with Councilmember Edwards' last question and ask, who did the other injection well, the one that we already have? Or the one, is it one in a pilot well, or?
Yeah, so, Councilor, recall, Injection Well Number One has already been drilled. That was drilled back in 2021. But that well has not been equipped. And so Cannon's contract for this work is for injection well equipping. That well was drilled. It was, the design for that well was prepared by a hydrogeologist. You know, when you're designing a well, it's really a combination of design from two different technical disciplines. Your hydrogeologist helps you design the components of the well that are downhole, the depth of the well, where it's going to be screened, how coarse or fine are the openings within that screen. And that's the hydrogeo piece. And then there's an engineering design piece that focuses on all the above-ground components and some of the downhole mechanical components. But, sorry, long answer, short answer, the equipping of Injection Well One has not been completed. It was a well that we drilled. We did injection testing on it. We did pump testing on it, but it has not been equipped. GSI Water Solutions was the hydrogeologist that designed the downhole components of that. But they are not technically qualified to design the equipping of the well.
Okay, and they did the design of that one?
They did the design of the downhole components of that well.
Okay, and the design of the equipping is a totally different thing. So I just want, okay. And then who's doing the hydrogeologic of these? Is that you, or?
No, so that is actually an additional solicitation that an RFP went out in May to procure a hydrogeologist to do the design of the downhole components of the remaining injection wells that RFP Response Period just recently closed. And the program team is currently evaluating proposals for the hydrogeo that would be doing the design of the downhole components for the remaining injection wells.
Do we have an estimate of that, a range?
An estimate of?
The cost of that?
We don't have, you know, we don't have a solid estimate on that. That's why we wanted to go out to RFP to get competitive pricing. Oh, sorry.
I'll just add, not yet. We have cost proposals that are part of the submissions, but we haven't opened those yet. With qualifications-based selections for professional services agreement for engineers, consultants, first, we evaluate the proposals based on qualifications. And then, once we select a, once we select a consultant, we look at their cost proposal and then negotiate. And so we haven't opened those cost proposals yet, but they're sitting on someone's desk at this point. So we're almost there.
Okay, and then with Cannon, did we go with... Did you choose based on the price? Or did you choose based on their location, or had they?
So the proposal, the RFP for well design that Cannon is being recommended for, awarded for, that was reviewed by a team of city staff and Confluence Engineering that included our city engineer and our utilities division manager. And that was a qualifications-based selection as well. That said, we know that the firm that staff has chosen for recommendation for the city council was significantly less expensive than the other proposer.
Okay. And then with Cannon and Corolo, who's going to oversee those two projects?
The, so for Cannon, for well design, the program manager, Dan Hamel at Confluence Engineering, will oversee that.
Okay, so he's responsible for that. And with Corolo?
That's really on city staff to oversee Corolo. Right now, Corolo's going to be doing financing and funding mostly. They're also doing permitting. You know, that will be more of a mix depending on what exact task they're working on. But that is mostly city staff.
And then when you say that it's a no-cost agreement, that just means it was already budgeted. It's, there's a cost. And the cost is like somewhere around $300,000?
I'd like to clarify that. It's a no-new cost. I wish I caught that in the presentation, but yes, there's definitely a cost. We're just not, Corolo's not asking for more money. They're asking for a time extension, and we're revising their scope.
Okay, and so, and what's the time extension?
I believe it is until June 30th, 2016? I'm sorry, 2026?
Yeah, yeah. Their current contract is set to expire at the end of this fiscal year. And so that needs to be extended to allow them to continue to provide that permitting and funding finance support through the completion of the program.
Do you remember the date? Thank you, it's December 31, 2026.
And the permitting is for the wells?
The permitting is really, it's for the whole program, so...
Can you pull up that slide? That's, I think, a pretty key slide that we haven't gone over yet. Yeah, keep going. One more. Yep, that one. So these are all the tasks that still need to be completed for the recycled water program. You could see it's pretty extensive. And we have land use permitting is the third column, our Regional Water Quality Control Board and Division of Drinking Water permitting. And there's some other work there. So Corolo is working on some of those. So you see the Title 22 Engineers Report, the Report of Waste Discharge Permit, and so on.
And is their estimate, does that include a contingency? Or is that going to be like, that's it? We're not going to see any more amendments, or?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. That contract, to my knowledge, does not have additional contingency. That, we intend to perform that scope within that contract amount that you see in the staff report.
Yeah, it'd be great to see it like 7E. And then, one last question. Why wouldn't we be able to use the pipeline?
Yeah, I mean, we're, the program team is obviously very optimistic. We can reuse the pipeline. It's a 30-year-old pipeline that hasn't been used much in that lifespan. Then again, that's still well within its remaining useful life. City staff has done some preliminary investigations into the condition of that pipeline, and those results have been very promising. They did a preliminary pressure test, and that pipeline was able to hold pressure in excess of 100 PSI, which is, again, a very promising result. But there still are other things that need to be evaluated before we are, you know, 100% confident that that can be the pipeline that is the key component of the recycled water program. There are also some, you know, probably waivers that may need to be obtained from the Division of Drinking Water because that pipeline was put in with the intention of being a raw water desalination pipeline and not a indirect potable reuse, advanced purified recycled water pipeline. All that meaning that, you know, it probably didn't take into account all the different potential offset requirements that are necessary from water lines, sewer lines, and those types of things. We're optimistic we can work through that with waivers and alternate mitigating strategies, but those are just a number of the different reasons why we may not be able to use the pipeline. And so the thought was, let's be prudent. Let's plan on using the pipeline, but have a Plan B in case that's not a viable strategy.
Okay, and actually, I have two more questions. The well field rehab thing, part, how can we tell that those are failing?
Thank you for the question. I'll let Utilities Division Manager, Damaris Hansen, report out on that. And, you know, she didn't show the slide that we have, and maybe we don't need to if we're able to answer all of council's questions. But are you able to answer that, Damaris?
Sure, thank you. So the wells that we have right now existing in Moro Valley, we have seven wells there. Four of them have been in since the '60s, and some of them have been having some trouble, having some trouble. One of them, we aren't using at all anymore. It's not passing its water quality tests. So we know that the wells need some rehab work. So that's part of that project is for that rehab work. The other part of the project is the extraction well, the equipping of that well and the pipelines associated with it. So that's the portion that we included with the injection wells.
Right, right. But the, so when it's not testing right, does that mean that the... How does that mean it's failing? I mean, doesn't that mean the aquifer's failing, or?
No, we have four wells right next to each other, and one of them will have a Bactee hit and the other ones won't.
They will have what?
It has a Bactee hit. It's a coliform or Bactee bacteria in it. We do a test on it every time before we run it to make sure it's in good working condition and it can meet water quality standards, and it's not been meeting water quality. So we haven't been using it because of that reason.
Oh, but the other ones are fine?
The other ones have been passed.
So you think it's got something to do with the?
I think it has something to do with the well itself and the sanitary seal of it.
Huh. And then I just want to just really go over again the overseeing of Corolo. And like, who, is that you, Mr. Qualick, that is going to be overseeing that, or?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. I want to maybe zoom out and talk about how the management structure of this project has been. We have a program management team. And so I am on that program management team. And, you know, we oversee, me and Damaris, and also, Damaris is on that program management team. We oversee Corolo activities. We oversee Confluence and Mr. Hamel, who then will oversee the other contracts that are part of 7B. That said, there is a lot of work, as you can see from this slide, that is going on that requires technical expertise to oversee. And so in some cases, Mr. Hamel may be working in collaboration with Mr. Semo or Mr. Salverson at Corolo. But again, that's all under the direction of city staff.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Do you want to move on to the next item? Or do you want to pause and take public comment and then move on to them to separate? Where are you at?
I would suggest, Mayor, that we continue on with our short presentation, and that way we can cover.
Shorter?
Short, yes, as short as possible. And if we could go maybe two slides back? One more slide, right there. Just, I will not go through all of this. Some of this, some of the answers that this slide provides have come up at previous city council meetings. I know that there has been questions about Confluence Engineering and how Confluence Engineering was procured. And so, as many of you remember, as all of you remember, I'm sure, and many members of the audience remember, with the departure of longtime city engineer and former Public Works Director, Rob Livik, it really left a gap. We had very minimal engineering staffing at that point at the end of 2021. It was really just me, and I'm not an engineer, and Pam Newman, who's also not an engineer. And we needed to get licensed engineers on board to help us continue moving capital projects along and also have a city engineer on record for the city. And so we did do a competitive procurement for that. And we decided to take on two engineers on a part-time basis. One of them was ICOP Engineering out of Atascadero, who covered everything not utilities. They were responsible for moving forward part of the Bachi Ball Court project, as well as some other projects. And then also, we took on Confluence Engineering to assist with staff augmentation for the Wharf project, as well as other wastewater projects. And we were very impressed with Mr. Hamel and Confluence Engineering. And so when we did get a new city engineer, he did help us finish out some work on some of those capital projects. And it became very clear that, given his experience and expertise with indirect potable reuse programs, Mr. Hamel really was in a position to add value to the city by taking that portion of the Wharf project over. Corolo had not really honestly worked on that portion of the project. And the project was behind from a schedule standpoint. It was unclear what the plans were for budget for that project within the context of the greater Wharf budget. And so Mr. Hamel, through consultation with the Wharf Subcommittee at that time, which was a different Wharf Subcommittee in 2022, we brought that to the city council as a sole source procurement to bring on Confluence Engineering as the project manager for the recycled water project. And again, that was at an open, regular meeting of the city council in August of 2022. And since then, Mr. Hamel has served as project manager for recycled water. There's a number of accomplishments. We have slides here. I won't go through them unless requested. And, you know, by all accounts, Mr. Hamel has done an outstanding job. He's helped the city obtain $10.5 million in grants. And the proposal for tonight is to pass an amendment to continue Mr. Hamel's services for one more year so that the project can get through design. And then, at that point, the city can decide whether Confluence Engineering is right to continue on the construction management portion of the project, whether there's still a need for Confluence Engineering services, or whether we'd be better served by another consultant. And so I'll stop there. And then if we could go to the, I believe it's the last slide. We were already on it. And I'll kick it to Ms. Damaris Hansen, a couple more slides. And she could talk at a high level about, is there another slide? Oh, you know what? It's a completely different PowerPoint. Rather than have her go through that, she's already spoken quite a bit about the extraction well rehab. And maybe we'll just hold off on that to save some time. And if council has any additional questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. Are there any additional questions on that before I open public comment? One?
I, am I, I thought that Corolo originally claimed that they were going to do the injection well part and that they, when they were hired, and that that was like their specialty and, like, didn't we? Wasn't that part of their bid?
That was part of the plan, yes.
So did we get reimbursed for that?
We removed the scope items and those, we never expended those costs for those scope items.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
I have a question. I just wanted to make a comment.
Oh, you want to wait till after public comment?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm, can we change it back to three minutes? 7B, 7C, three minutes instead of two, one item. Thank you. Public comment is open. Three minutes, one swipe.
Three minutes, one swipe. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Terry Simons, glad to be here. I have to tell you that this has been a long and painful process. At the risk of reinstating my apparent love relationship for our Public Works Director, which has embarrassed him to no end, I must say that, once again, I am very much impressed with the work that he's done and continues to do to move this project forward. And I will say, in addition, while I had some initial doubts about Mr. Hamel and his firm, that recent work that's been demonstrated in tonight's agenda packet has very much improved my attitude about his participation with the city. And I'm looking forward to having him help us wrap this puppy up. Because, as we all know, none of us have been very happy with Corolo Engineering. And if you looked at the subtext of the staff report, you see that Corolo started with a not-to-exceed contract of $300,000, and they managed over a couple of years to pump that into a 13-plus-million-dollar bill to the city. pump that into a 13-plus million dollar bill to the city. Have they been paid everything they are entitled to? I suspect they have. Is this $300,000 non-compensatable agreement in their favor? I suspect it is. I will be very glad when the last check is posted to Corolo Engineering, and the sooner the better. Thank you.
Councilmen, staff, I'm speaking to 7B Recycled Water Component of the Water Reclamation Facility Program. I'll refer to two of the three components recommended for hiring. Corolo, Corolo's reputation is in the dumps. I can't imagine that the city would ever want to do business with them again. The original contract with the city from March 2018 told us what they were supposed to do. They were hired because they claimed to be the pros who had national experience, expertise. Eric Casares was Corolo's engineer for us to be the project manager. He was admonished by the state licensing board for his misrepresentation of the WRF, WRF project. He was recalled from our project and left the company. Confluence Engineering. Confluence Engineering has a poor reputation from the Central Coast Blue Recycled Water Project in the Five Cities area, which has failed. You can read the press release from March 19, 2024. The South County City members pulled out. Mr. Heimel hasn't produced anything for the city that the city staff couldn't do. Please read Heimel's original contract with the city and subsequent amendments. Where are the permits that Mr. Heimel was supposed to get for the drilling pilot injection wells? He said he would get them in his original contract scope of work. A coastal development permit, CDP, was required for clearing the vegetation, a well permit for the county public health department, and a discharge order from the regional board. Also, an, an entry agreement from PG&E was required. Now Cannon is being contracted to do these things. Please reconsider.
Hi, Margaret Carmen. I'm speaking on 7B. Interestingly enough, I'm looking at the Board of Supervisors for next week, their agenda, and I see that Cannon is very busy. So I'd also like to make sure that they have enough time with all the money we're going to pay them to do what they say they're going to do. It appears that Cannon might be the new Corolo, as they're just flipping roles as project manager, project managers. They will hire six subcontractors to do the work. One of these contractors is Katz, who was previously hired under the WRF construction to handle PR or communications via the website for the public to stay abreast. But after a few months, posting stopped and were not continued. Was Katz paid in full for this incomplete work? Why would we want this company rehired? And the other person was talking about, I'd like more specifics of what that outreach might look like if we're going to pay Katz more money. There are a number of services which are necessary that Cannon is not providing, which means more money will be paid out later. To quote their contract, archaeological, botanical, biological services are excluded and are being performed by others. I apologize for my voice. Sequa is assumed to be prepaid by the city's environmental consultant. Number three, landscaping design services are excluded. And number four, hazardous materials investigation and remediation is excluded, although we were talked about, he's going to try to put those together. I was listening. In addition to the city manager is being offered three optional services for a mere $200,000 extra. I say that sarcastically. Option Task One, the Embarcadero Pipeline, Moro Creek Design and ESDC. Optional Task Two, FEMA Blood Mapping. And Optional Task Three, Public Education. Are these necessities or are they options? Is the city setting itself up for more amended amendments and more change orders and more of our money being spent in ways that we might not think is the best way? Thank you for listening.
Good evening again, Bill Martin.
Actually, I think what I, after where we had 140 million on the wastewater treatment plant when it started out at 35 million. I'm looking at this, we're, I added it up. It's almost 4 million for consultants. The water table out there is like 50 to 100 feet, probably even less. I mean, when you recharge it, you're going to recharge that basin up to maybe 10 feet below the surface. You can drill a well for 70 bucks a foot. You're going down 100 feet, that's 10 grand. I just don't understand. Even our engineers seems like, you know, some of this simple stuff that they could handle it. To recharge a basin where there's no room, number one, hardly to recharge it in the wintertime when that creek flows, it's going to bring that water table right to the surface, and there's no place to put the water, period. But if you are going to put it there, you can get Phila Pony and Thompson, they charge 70 bucks a foot. You can drill a well out there for probably 10 grand. And like talking about the well, I was up pump testing one of our ag wells today. All this stuff, I, I don't get these $4 million to, you know, get a well field going or the infrastructure. The well that's failing out there, all you do is you either backflush it, or you put an acid wash, and that will clear, clean out your filter in your well, probably do it for a grand rather than having to punch a new well. I mean, it just kind of baffles me. And I, I'd like to know what the actual water table is, where these wells are going in. Because if I'm not mistaken, the water table's probably only 20, 30 foot down. And what the actual depth of that table is before you either hit bedrock or you're out of the aquifer, the base of the aquifer? Because I think you're recharging a basin that probably there's no room to put most this recycled water in, especially in the wintertime. There'll definitely be no place to put it because the wastewater treatment plant went under, you know, last year or so. So, I mean, there's no room for any water to put there in the first place in the wintertime. Thank you.
Oh my gosh, aren't we done yet? Lynda Donnelly, citizen of Moro Bay. I am so tired of this project. Okay, I'm just going to read because minutes go by. Let's go back to Mike, to when Mike Nunley was the Water Reclamation Facility Project Engineer, who was hired to manage the initial phases of the WRF project. For whatever reason, in April of 2018, the city then hired Corolo Engineers, who supposedly had national expertise in doing water reclamation projects throughout the country, and especially in California. Some of what Corolo Engineers said they could do for the city was already being performed by Mike Nunley. Oh, surprise. At that time, the city manager recommended Corolo Engineers over what the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee, or WFCAC, had recommended. So much for that saga. Then, in August of 2022, Dan Heimel with Confluence Engineering Solutions came on board, even though there was no request made for his services, because we've been following this, been at meetings, been sitting in seats since 2013. When he said that he would then do for the city what is already being tasked to do, to be done by Corolo. Remember, Andy Salverson? Nobody mentioned his name until tonight. First time ever heard anybody in this room mention Andy Salverson's name, and he's the project, he's the expertise at Corolo. Okay, calm down. No, no statement of qua, am I, where am I? Okay. So no statement of qualifications was submitted by Corolo. He was simply brought on board, and he was brought on board in December of 2021. The recommendation of the city manager at the time, and then Corolo was descoped, and now we want to bring them back. They were supposed to finish out the rest of this recycling, but we brought on Confluence. And now we're going, and now we're leaving Confluence, and we're going over to ask Cannon to do the same thing that we asked Nunley and Corolo and Confluence to do. And since we've been paying Dan Heimel with Confluence, I don't know what he's done. He was supposed to design in 2022. He was supposed to design. He was supposed to get permits, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's like somebody just keeps passing the buck to the next person with all these loopholes, like we don't have a memory. And I know some of you up there are new, and people in the seats are new and back here, but we've been following this since 20, the beginning. I have a lot more to say.
Natalia Merzouyan. Now tonight, another consultant is being added to do what Corolo and Confluence Engineering Solutions were supposed to do all along, most of which could easily be done in-house by city staff. Has the world gone insane? Since day one, this project has been poorly managed and is why it is bogged down with so many issues. When does the nightmare end? Why can't the city issue its own CDP? Without the CCC, why was the new city engineer not CC'd on the staff report for these consultant issues? Business and professions code state civil engineering. What about the expertise of Andy Silverson, Salverson from Corolo, who this city now never met, which is why they were? What, in the first place? Picked in the first place? That's an R. Design bid build? Okay. It sounds to me like we need Cary Grant here to make the sequel to Mr. Blanding's Dream House, because it's our nightmare water reclamation house. Thank you.
Betty Winholz. I have some comments and some questions. The first of all is my favorite, why are we still calling this the Water Resource Center instead of the WRF? And I would like this to go back to the WRF. All these documents refer to it as the WRF. So I would think the facility out on Teresa should be named that. I, I, even though 7B and 7C are technically separate, the same document from Cannon is in both of them, to the point where they forgot to eliminate some of the recycle stuff into their injection well. So it, it's kind of curious to me that it was just maybe, you know, passed along and not really looked at as the contract, because the contract for 7C is the same as 7B, and it shouldn't be. What else do I want to say about that? I, in terms of the costs covered, because this contract on 7B for Cannon is for 18 months, is inflation included in this contract, and that's the, the amount? Or will there be amendments later regarding that? It seems to me that we haven't learned the lesson from the initial part of the WRF, where you get the land first, you get your permits first, and then you do your building. Whereas we're still doing that trick where we're hiring people to design things and do things without permits and without land. Because I'm thinking that this well is, one of them at least, is already on PG&E property, which is not in our easement. And so we're going to have trouble again, which means things are going to get delayed. And when things get delayed, we get, someone mentioned amendments and more overcost those charges. And it seems to me we're doing that backwards again, that we haven't done our lessons learned. Will, and then again, in terms, I would say amen to that PR person, that, that company did not serve us well. And so I would hope that that would not be who we would be wanting to have hired again. I'm wondering why the city manager is in charge of this project instead of the city engineer, because it's under engineering. I'm wondering, the question was already asked about the seawall. I need, so the costs, I'm trying to read my handwriting, much like Natalia was trying to read Lynda's. And so I think the basic question is that, why are we doing this not in the order of normalcy? Where you get your land, you know that you've got that secured, you've got your, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands?
Hi, Mayor. We have no raised hands on the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Qualick, do you want to take a stab at answering some of those questions?
Thank you for the opportunity to address the comments, Mayor. I, I'm not going to go through all of them, but maybe I'll just throw out a couple that, that I, I heard and felt compelled to respond to. It, it's true that Corolo won an award or won a contract based on their expertise, however many years ago. And Mr. Salverson, whose, whose name has come up, I think I heard a comment that no one's met him. I, I've met him. We've had meetings with Mr. Salverson. And Mr. Salverson is still going to be on board for the permitting activities that we described earlier. So our goal has been to retain the folks at Corolo that we need to get the job done and let them go on other tasks that we don't need them for. I will add that moving from Corolo to Confluence has saved us a lot of money. The rates that Corolo charges as a national firm are totally different from we get, from what we would get from our, our local firm that, that we're working with now. And the question about the order of operations, usually you get the land first and the permitting, and then you do the design and construction. It's a point well taken. I would just remind the city council to consider that the differentiating factor here is that the city was under a severe timeline to get the job done. And that necessitated concurrent activities going on at the same time. So whereas, you know, if we were working on a park project that we were self-funding, we may have the luxury to, to take those steps slowly. In this case, we didn't have that. We had a time schedule order to complete the plant, and now we have funding and financing agreements that require us to do the rest of the work. And I, I will say that since I've been here, it's been three years now, staff, along with the project management team, including staff from Corolo, from Confluence, and from other firms, have done the best that we can with a very difficult situation. I think it's easy to look at some of the cost overruns and change orders and make assumptions about mistakes happening. But I can say, while there have been mistakes, and we've made mistakes, and everybody makes mistakes, there were unforeseen conditions in many cases, regulatory issues and other hangups that created a lot of the issues that, that we've had to deal with. And, and based on what I've seen, those issues were dealt with, and those challenges were dealt with in a professional manager, excuse me, with, with professionalism and with the consultation of the WRF Subcommittee, and sometimes members of the public as well. So just wanted to call that out, and happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. There's a contingency, that contingency that's put in addresses the inflation?
I can have Mr. Heimel clarify. I believe most of the contingency is for optional tasks. Is there any contingency money for the Cannon contract that is related to inflation? And, and the proposed recommendation is inclusion?
And the proposed recommendation is inclusion of a 10% contingency for unknown events. I mean, you know, when proposing on a project like this, I mean, the consulting team knows the duration of the project. They know that inflation is going to be part of it. You know, there, there is at times potential to increase rates depending on whether the contract allows for that. But, you know, that, that should be factored into the base bid. Really, the contingency is designed for unknown items or additional scope that may be required as the project progresses.
Thank you. Also, the question have, has come up a couple of times. I've heard about questioning whether or not the well is on Vista property on our easement or on PG&E property. Have we verified that location to, to know it's on our property or not, or our easement?
Thank you for the question. That location was based on a surveyor, a licensed surveyor's survey. And we've also staked out that location. And we have an exhibit forthcoming. I don't think we have it ready for tonight. Oh, we do? Okay. Is there a way to pull up the last slide of the presentation? And it was verified that indeed the pilot well is within the city's easement, which is on Vista's property. It is not on PG&E property. We'll just wait for that to come Thank you. And so if you could expand that.
Keep going down. So that exhibit there and the green line shows the Vista easement and the little red and white square there is where that well is. The next exhibit just shows it a little closer to show you, but that's where that... The, that, the well is there in the red and white square that says IW1. And then the easement is in that grade with the green outline. That shows a Vista easement. So it shows that well within that Vista easement. The next picture shows it just a little closer if you want to go to the next slide. There's the actual well right there.
And I believe on the right side there, you have staking?
Yes.
That was, was put out. And so those lines are based on actual physical stakes. And it, it is clearly within the city's easement as surveyed by a licensed professional surveyor.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then one last question. Is there a reason, when we talk about Corolla, I think that, you know, all of us up here have had to address the challenges with those contracts over the last year and a half that I've been here, and it has not been pleasurable by any means. So the permitting and funding work that they would do, grant work, things like that, is that not something you mentioned earlier that Confluence's contract and, and service costs are less than Corolla? So is this not something we could task Confluence with in their amendment, contract amendment versus Corolla? Is there a reason why we are going to use them knowing this challenge?
Thank you for the question. I think that's an important question. And I understand, I want to mention the frustrations of, of folks here tonight and others at home that have been living through this project for a decade now, over a decade. And want to assure everyone that we really are looking for the most efficient and cost-effective way to complete this program and all move on. We, we, we really have a valuable partner in Corolla for the permitting. We have Mr. Salverson, who was mentioned as a technical expert on the funding side. I'll just give an example. A staff member who was managing, a state staff member who was managing the SRF loan for the city was picked up by Corolla. So, you know, that we now have someone at Corolla who used to work for the state for years and who literally managed our loan. And so it's these kinds of connections that assist us in a way that we wouldn't be able to do in-house, that Confluence wouldn't be able to do. It really gives us an edge when we're working on these things, especially when we're up against tight timelines. You know, we don't have the luxury of time to, you know, for city staff to receive the education to be able to do this work or to research things about our, the SRF program. We just, we want the most efficient way possible. And so, you know, in city staff's view, the most efficient way possible to complete those tasks as part of this project is to utilize Corolla.
Thank you. And I, and I know on the Subcommittee, we had this conversation already this week, and I appreciate you indulging us with that and that the understanding is that the, the part of the challenge we faced was with the program management that they were doing or lack thereof, and that there is no program management involved in this. So thank you for that clarification. So I just have comments. Does anybody have any other questions? Nope, nope. Comments? I know this was a consent item, and I would just share, share my frustration that it should have been under our, our business and we wouldn't have...
When's the start date?
For?
If this, for this process, if this is approved?
I believe Councilmember Landham, you're asking about Cannon's start date or?
The whole, yeah, the whole shebang.
I mean, a lot of this is already in progress. Of course, Confluence Engineering has, has been on board. Cannon's start date, do we have that, Mr. Heimel?
In the agreement included in the agenda package is a June 11th start date or execution date for their contract. It's up today.
In other words, assuming the contract is approved, they are now, as soon as the contract is approved and in effect, their start date in the contract would be today. So they would immediately become the designer for recycled water.
And they have a deadline? Like, there's like a, 2026, is that what you said? It's not going to go on beyond that?
The city has a deadline of, I believe it's September 2026. Cannon's portion, which is design, we'd hope to conclude much sooner than that and possibly within this fiscal year, within the next fiscal year coming up.
And then the physical part can be done within that timeframe?
That's what our schedule currently shows.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all the information that was provided. I think it was important. Again, as a Subcommittee member, I have the opportunity to view this, but this is millions of dollars that I think is important that all council and our community understands. As we're entering into these contracts, I guess I'll steal your line, Mr. Qualick, that you just shared is the council has done the best we can with a very difficult position. It's unfortunate that we inherited this and the timeline is, is becoming tight and the costs are getting to the top of it all. But the goal is to close out this project. And it's just, it's painful to do this, but we can't do it on our own. So with that, unless there's any other comments.
Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt the flow, but I felt that I should say something here. Listening to the, the public comments and also the presentation by staff, just two points I want to make. I, I'm very sympathetic with the frustration that was by our citizens. And part of me even felt that, that I should have been here at that, those times. And so I can, I can, I, I can, I can live this with you. And then at this time, when you have questions and I have be, I can be here to say, yes, this can explain the whole process. However, I was doing something else. I wasn't here. And I felt that, that I, to be part of the community and I, I was missed out on that excitement. And then, on the other hand, I wanted to express my appreciation and support to my staff and then the consultants to help us along the way. And of course, city council members who have lived through this entire process. This $160 million project, it'll be, is a huge enormous undertake, no matter how big, how small your community will be, no matter how smart or how educated or, or not understanding what's going on. It's just, it's a huge enormous undertake. And I had the pleasure led a few, a couple million dollar projects, sewer project. That's, by the end of the day, I, I lost a lot of hair and I went through the same sort of public debate. And, and then I learned a lot too. And there's complications, change of consultants and change of project managers. Because the sewer project and water project, a lot of things can happen, can go wrong. And tonight, this evening, it was demonstrated, little things you didn't do, it's not, not purposefully, but then something happened, then you lead to something else. When I, I had the pleasure, when I started, this, this, this project has already been taken over by Public Works Director, Gary Colick. And no, the project was originally led by the city manager. And then due to his transition, Mr. Colick graciously took it over. So he allowed me time to focus on other, other challenging issues. And for that, I deeply appreciate. I'm very grateful for, for your leadership and taking on this. And I also had a pleasure working with some of the consultants that today are here. For example, Mr. Dan Hamel. I do not know his background, engineer, or I didn't do this research, but I, my interaction with him had, had made me felt comfortable with his knowledge. I had asked a lot of silly questions when he tried to explain to me these, this projects. And as a result, I felt that, okay, this is, as, this is something that city has had made decision to, to, to do, to take on. And then as Mr. Colick stated, this is something, it's, it's already done. It's there. It's time. We, we just, we just wanted this to be finished as smooth as we can. And I also echo what Mr. Colick said, that I, I do believe in, wholeheartedly, that city staff and, and the consultant, that, for example, I can only speak for, for consultant Confluence, Dan Hamel's team. They are truly doing the best they can. Corolla, certainly, there are a lot of problems and that, that a lot of frustration, you know, on my, on my end, I can feel frustration. But I think through, through professionalism and through communication, some of the things has been resolved. And now we are at the last leg of the project, last leg as, as much as we could. Hopefully, we're just being able to look at the bigger picture, be positive, and do the best we, do the best we can, continue to do best we can, and be collaborative and look, helping each other to get through this so that years down the road, then we can say, yes, it wasn't, we can look at the project, we can say that at least it's, it's done, it's over. I, yeah, I, I, I just, Mayor, thank you. I just, I wanted to make a point with those things.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. I think we'll all want to say, yeah, it's over. We're all looking forward to that. Mr. Qualick, thank you for the information tonight. I appreciate it. Ms. Hanson, thank you. Mr. Heimel. I painfully am going to make a motion to approve these last two items on the consent. And I'm 7B and 7C, and I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have two items left that should go pretty quickly, but I've been asked for a five-minute restroom break. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're going to resume our meeting and we're going to move on to our public hearing item, 8A, a public hearing to report on delinquent solid waste collections accounts and adopt an ordinance authorizing San Luis County Assessor to assess amounts due on delinquent solid waste collection accounts as a tax lien against the properties. Public Works Department, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council, Greg Qualick, Director of Public Works. And I have here Janine Burlingame, Management Analyst for Public Works, who handles waste hauling issues. And very briefly, this is a public hearing to review accounts that are delinquent for waste services. And the process for putting liens against properties of those delinquent accounts is to bring a public hearing to the City Council, and that's what we are here to do. And Janine will take the presentation from there.
Thank you and good evening. It's that time of year where we go through our annual public hearing and process for the delinquent solid waste accounts. In our municipal code, Section 8.16, it outlines the different activities between the hauler and the city that are to be done to address the collection of delinquent solid waste accounts. The hauler prepares a list of delinquent accounts that are 120 days or older. They then send out to the property owner certified letters requesting payment within a 45-day period of time. After that 45 days has expired, they present the city with a list of those accounts that are still in delinquent status. And then it comes over to the city side where we schedule a public hearing. We then send out our own certified mailing 10 days prior to the public hearing to notify the property owners of the scheduling of the public hearing and giving them an opportunity to come to the public hearing and provide comments or protests regarding the, the delinquent amounts that would be assessed on their properties. And in addition, there's a couple of government code sections that also kind of outline that process of annually having the hauler put together a list of the properties for those delinquent accounts, setting, the city setting a public hearing for that and as well as the city providing that notification. So if we can go to the third slide for timeline, that, I'm not going to go through everything, but this just lists the different activities that were taken this year between the hauler and the city. I will note that once the city had submitted, or prior to the city submitting their final list to the, to, sorry, the hauler submitting their final list to the city, what they do is make additional efforts after that 45-day period to get in contact with the property, the customer, whether it's by phone, email, or regular mail, whatever is on record, and seeing if they could make an arrangement to get that payment prior to submitting that final list to us. Then before, or before the staff report was prepared for tonight's public hearing, I also made a verification with the hauler again to see if anyone had come in to make their payment prior to the public hearing staff report when it was released last week. There are eight accounts that were submitted to the city from the hauler. And before tonight's meeting, one of those accounts had paid, so that was removed from the list that you see before you tonight. So with that, staff is recommending that the council conduct the public hearing to receive the comments and hear objections or protests, to authorize the addition of a 2% administration fee to the delinquent fees that would be owed to the hauler. And lastly, to adopt Resolution 3420, 3424. And just to note that there is a Health and Safety Code, Section 5473, that requires that that vote be a two-thirds majority vote in order to have those delinquent charges be collected on the tax roll. With that, I'll turn it over to the council for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burlingame. Any questions from council?
I, I do. I have a question, and I, I don't think I asked this question last time we did this. I apologize if I'm asking it again, I can't remember the answer, but as a, as a renter, I always think of renter questions. And, and so I pay my own waste, you know, hauling fee, my property owner does not. So if I were to become delinquent to this point, how do we handle that regarding, you know, this process? How would that be handled if it's not the property owner who's listed as the bill payer?
So the, the notices that the city sends out, that 10-day notice before this public hearing, that goes to the property owners because we are notifying them of the delinquent account status, the amount that is owed, the fact that there is a public hearing that we intend to submit to the county tax assessor a lien on the property for that amount. And so that is their opportunity to then, before, before coming to the public hearing, being able to either take care of that. We did have a situation where one of, it was a landlord-tenant situation where the landlord, that's when they found out, when they got the, the notice, and they were able to arrange with their tenant to be able to get that paid prior to this process being completed. So we were able to pull that off the record.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me. I don't have any other questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? With that, this is a public hearing item and I will open public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Teri Simons. Coming so quickly on the heels of the millions of dollars of contracts which you just waded through, I find it shocking and disappointing that as much staff time has been spent on this and as much public monies have been spent on this to collect $1,975, really? Really? Come on, there's got to be a better way. 2% administrative surcharge? Are you kidding me? The garbage company gets $50 per charge and we're only going to get 2%? There's something wrong with this system. Why we even have to get involved when the garbage company's the one making the money? I, I don't understand it, but it's just... One more thing to look at as we go forward. This is a mess. Oh, since I've got a few minutes. I would, I will say that the fact that it's only $1,900 and change is remarkably low for a community of our size. And I think it speaks well to the vast majority of the citizens of this town that they do pay their bills, whether it's the landlords or whether it's the tenants. And that, that's a double-edged sword. It only adds more frustration to why we even bother, but on the other hand, the good news, it's, it's a small amount. Thank you.
Natalia, I'm so, I'd like to comment on this just because my waste, solid waste treatment bill went up 50% in the last year or two. And I can commiserate with anybody who is behind in their payments. And I liked unusually well what Teri said about why does the city get involved? Because if they weren't involved, I don't think though, that extra payment that we are now being charged would have occurred. Somehow, that situation that you create where if you want to vote against something, you have to do this special thing, and not enough people did that to vote against it. But I'll tell you, I went around passing on information about it before it happened and I didn't encounter a single person who was in favor of the thing passing. So it's, it is a mess. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands?
Hi, Mayor, we have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close this public hearing item and bring it back to council. Mr. Simons, I agree with you, definitely. Is there a threshold on this or something? Or we just, no matter what the amount is, we, we spend staff time and, and all this work on your being, on your end to collect this amount?
It's part of the municipal code process that we, that we do it this way. As far as the, the garbage company presenting it to us, it's, I believe it's a state government, a code requirement that we hold, conduct the public hearing in order to be able to levy the charge on the tax roll. And, and it's a part of the process, I think, that the county tax assessor has set up that we need to have a resolution from the council authorizing that those charges be levied.
I was just going to say the same thing that Ms. Burlingame just said, that it's because that we're levying this through the power of taxation from the county that a local government needs to authorize it. If the council or the city decided that it was a waste of time and money to collect this through the taxes, then I suppose we would keep sending delinquent bills to the service, the folks getting the services. I mean, you know, at this point, they're not paying their bills. And so one option is to collect it through taxes, and that's the option we've taken. I suppose we could look at other options, sending them more bills, I guess, to have them pay.
If, if I may add a piece of information, that the city used to have the hauler just continue to go through the collections themselves, then there were accounts that were $25,000, $30,000 in, in delinquency, and the hauler was writing those off. And as we all know, if the hauler writes that off, that means everyone else is paying for it. And so once this system was implemented, we saw drastic reduction. So we're actually proud that it's a, it's a low number of 1,900, that means it's effective.
Oh, I couldn't agree more. It's a low number. It just at some point becomes cost negative to be pursuing this. Does anyone have any questions or comments or ready for a motion? Move approval of, oh, do we need to read it? We do, don't we? Move approval to adopt Resolution 3424 authorizing San Luis County Assessor to assess amounts due on delinquent solid waste collection accounts as tax liens against the properties.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Hopefully by next year, if it's still low, we can find another option. Moving on to our last item, 9A, and I'm guessing you're taking this, Ms. Conrad? Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. So this evening, I'm presenting our single business item, which is an amendment to the contract services agreement with our attorneys, Alashir and Winder. This is going to be amendment number eight. Amendment seven was approved last June. I think we're all aware, but I'll just go over it for our audience here, that Alashir and Winder, Winder is a full-service public agency law firm with over 60 attorneys and offices spanning from the San Francisco Bay area to San Diego. They provide a comprehensive array of legal services to the city, including, not limited to labor and employment, real property development, environmental law, public finance, torts, public safety, refuse and recycling negotiations, real estate, land use and zoning, complex litigation, franchises, water law, constitutional law, appeals, and election law. We've been utilizing their services for 10 years. And currently, this contract amount is budgeted in the 2425 proposed budget. It is a general, an overall decrease over last year's budget of $14,466. That is across all funds. For the general fund, it is an increase of $24,000. So I think mostly we'll just want to leave it open to questions or discussion, but what this contract is proposing is a total of 15% increase. This firm's rates have been undermarket at a pretty drastic rate compared to our other county comparable agencies. And so a 15% increase will bring them up to 5% below market in our county. The new proposed rates are 219 an hour for the first 50 hours for general services and over 50 hours is $242 per hour, and special services would be 294 per hour. So that's all I would present to you tonight and take any questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions from council? To my left? Nope. To my right, questions?
No questions.
With that, I will open public comment on this item.
Well, here we are, Chris. I've been waiting all year for this. First of all, I'd, I'd like Well, here we are, Chris. I've been waiting all year for this. First of all, I'd like to say that in the last year, I've developed a fairly warm relationship with our acting city attorney as a representative of the firm. And I don't really have a big problem with the quality of the service that we've gotten from Chris and his firm indirectly. But I did have a couple of questions. And I had my standard question is, why isn't the underlying contract attached to the staff report? Because we get the first 50 hours at a reduced rate, but is it the first 50 hours a week, first 50 hours a month, or first 50 hours per year? And if I had the general, the whole contract, I wouldn't have to ask that question. So I suspect that was a deletion on the part of staff, and this has happened before, and hopefully, it won't continue to happen. Other than that, you know, we talk about hiring an in-house attorney, and a lot of cities do. I continue to be satisfied with the work that Chris is doing in particular, and I hope that we can continue to have him. Should his firm decide to sub in a B player, then I'll have a different thought on the matter. Thank you.
Betty Winholz. I don't look at it as Mr. Newmeyer's contract. I look at it as the law firm's contract. And I think I'm disappointed that they're, either you all in closed session, maybe you have or you haven't, looked at comparisons with in-house, because it's hard for me to believe that we need all the services that the firm offers, and that we couldn't do it for less money locally, even, I don't know, we used to. And it seems to me that that should always be part of this conversation. And yet, you've brought nothing to the public to show us that this is the better way. So I'm a little disappointed, and it's not personal, but I think that maybe you need to do better.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands?
Hi, Mayor. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Simons, it's per month, just for clarification. 50 hours per month. Any other questions of staff? Comments? To my left.
I don't have any other questions. I do have a comment, that I appreciate the institutional knowledge that currently exists with the firm. As we heard tonight, we still have a little bit to go with the water injection and all of these different things. And so we have a lot on the horizon as well. And so, I really appreciate the fact that the firm is well-versed in the existing projects that we have, and have been working on possible future projects and understanding those. And so, that's one of the reasons why I'll be supporting this this evening.
Anything? No? Councilmember Barton, comments?
No.
Nope. Councilmember Landrum?
I would just say that in, and, you know, I agree with Mr. Simon, that Mr. Newmeyer is a very nice person. But I would agree, I would ask my fellow council members to consider, you know, the fiduciary responsibility to the ratepayers of Morro Bay, and make sure that we are, we are having, getting the best rate we can. This has been a contract that's been going on, I think, 10 years. And we haven't had, there's never been an RFP, contracting an attorney that has to drive from, you know, Orange County every two weeks. We pay, you know, drive time and hotel fees, rates, and it seems like it would be better for us to, even if we got another firm that was a bigger firm, we could be putting that money back into our own tax base if it was more local. I know there's some cities in our county that use a contract attorney, but they're local. So I would just ask that we consider that.
Are you done? Yeah, I'm, I think I can echo the sentiments up here. Yes, there comes institutional knowledge. This isn't about Mr. Newmeyer. He and I had this conversation earlier. I said this last year, and I was going to say it again this year, is that we've done no RFP for 10 years. For me, that's not the best responsible government we should have. We should always be looking at our contract services for a return on investment. And if they're still the best ones standing, then we can have another five- or 10-year relationship without the community or ourselves questioning. But to not do that, to not look at an opportunity or an option for an in-house attorney, their rates per hour are certainly in line with others. It's not about the rates per hour. It's about the overall bill, when it's $700,000 and $800,000 a year for legal services. I question whether or not there are other options that would be provided more locally. As was stated, there's travel time, you know, 12 hours a month, 10 meetings, or 10 months, two meetings a month. That's 120 hours we pay just for somebody to drive to work on the contract we pay them. So it's a little frustrating. The institutional knowledge could be gone at the next meeting if their firm decided to replace him with somebody else, or he decided to go somewhere else. So there's no guarantee of any of that. The resources their firm has are very vast. But I know from working with an in-house attorney here before in Morro Bay, before Mr. Newmeyer's company took over, the price was probably half what they're charging. And then there were the outside services that were contracted to for special services. The only thing that we've gotten to respond to one of those comments is projections or assumptions made by staff on what those rates would be for in-house. We've never looked. So there's not a lot of validity to what that is, as far as I'm concerned. So I appreciate Mr. Newmeyer's service. I'm just disappointed that there was not enough council support to move forward with looking at an RFP for in-house or contract services. And with that, I will ask one of you to make a motion, if you'd like, to approve this.
I will move to approve Amendment Number Eight to the contract services agreement with Alashire and Winder, LLP, for city attorney services.
And a second?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Yes.
Yeah. Aye? Did we say no?
Thank you. Aye, no? Thank you. With that, future agenda items?
I have one. So I was contacted by a woman that is a member of, she's a volunteer with Friends of the Library. And she explained to me the situation that's going on at the library, and it, and then she also came to my town hall meeting and explained it to everyone there, and everyone in the room. When she was talking, you could have heard a pin drop. It was so, it's actually moving. She is, so I don't know if you all know this, but the community raised $500,000 through the Friends of the Library to remodel the library. And now, the county is coming in and wanting to take over the space that they use to sell, to process and sell the used books. And I would just ask that council, I'm wanting to support her in this, and have council write a letter to the county, you know, that, in support of the Friends of the Library.
I would, I-
And I have a letter, like a template, that I can give staff, and maybe we can, if-
We don't have another meeting probably till just before their deadline, so maybe you could send that through the city manager, and we could each individually send it, because our next meeting is until the end of the month.
Okay. All right.
At work.
Yeah, but the sooner the better.
Yeah. And I would ask that, based on the public comments tonight, I would ask that staff would come back with some information on the SKIFs for us. I know Mr. Shapone wasn't here tonight to be able to address that, so if we can have an update on that at our next council meeting that would allow us, before the implementation of that, in case there was some sort of recommendation we wanted to make, or some sort of postponement, I would appreciate it. Anything else, anybody? Nope. You're looking like. With that, I'll move for adjournment. Thank you all.